Good evening and welcome to the November 26, 2019, meeting of the Eastland Meadow Town Council. I'm opening the meeting now with our pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we ask that you keep our servicemen and women around the globe, as well as our first responders, in your thoughts this evening. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being audiotaped and videotaped. If there was anyone here in the audience this evening doing the same, would you please identify yourselves? And seeing none, we can move into public comments. From the clerk, do we have anyone registered this evening? Thank you. Council comments. Any comments at this point? Okay, then we can quickly move to town manager's report. That's quick. They're in the batter's pots very quickly here.
Thank you. So, I wanted to let you know that we're moving forward on our ADP conversion project. It has a significant payroll and HR component that should make our processes far easier in the future once they're electronically available to employees. So, it's a major project. I signed the consultant's contract today. We have a conference call with the consultant set up for next week. And the library for the ADP project has been shared with the three individuals who work in the HR component of our office, as well as with myself and finance, of course. The HR issues that I normally talk about will probably be discussed in executive session. I would just want you to be aware that we're continuing to make progress with the segregation of the paperwork into the appropriate categories and under insecure facility, so to speak, where required by law. We also are continuing with our employee handbook and compilation of current policies. Jennifer Kerr will assume the duty of scheduling the swap floater and workers come this coming January. Once the -- I understand the pool of workers has already been established. But as their needs arise, those requests will come through the town manager's office so that Jennifer can keep track of who's working where and the number of hours and so forth. We took care of some business this week that I think brought me to the real -- for the first time to see the surface of my desk. There were a couple of outstanding matters left over. And I yesterday signed the Yummeal contract for DPW. It's about to expire in June, but anyway, it's signed now. So, everybody's happy with that. It's just a matter of -- they had an agreement, a memorandum of agreement, that was just begging to be executed. And I think it just got lost in the shuffle. So, it's done now. And lastly, there was a request last week from the Mass Inspector General regarding the sale of the ladder truck that some of you may recall from 2017. There was some unfinished business there with respect to a disposition of surplus property policy that had been represented to the IG's office that the town was in the process of drafting a new one. And they were waiting for it. So, I drafted a new one last week and we forwarded it. So, that's done. The November Department Heads Meeting was held last week. My report gives you in bullet form the representations of the various departments. Key one is, of course, the Department of Revenue approved the tax rate. Town Clerk's delighted that her voting machines have arrived. The Fire Department, I signed the contracts for the acquisition of that second ambulance and some various extrication equipment that was also approved by you. We're seeking two employees for building, an electrical inspector, as well as an administrative assistant. The Treasurer's Office reported that the representatives from Mass Mutual will be in in the second week of December to talk about the benefit plans that various employees have signed up for and give them updates on that. Paving is completed, which you probably could've figured out without my report. The IT and LCAT gave us good reminders. IT, I think I was a guilty party. I checked myself into Town Hall, I think. I think it was Town Hall. Anyway, I didn't tap, double-tap twice on my way out. And apparently, the door stays open with your ID, how it's coded. So, Ryan was kind enough to not point me out in particular at the Department Heads Meeting.
You just did.
I admitted my -- no, I fessed up right away. And then Don Mackey suggested that the boards and commissions be reminded that they should also attempt to arrange for audio recording of their meetings and written minutes because there have been occasions when the video has failed and he was unable to produce a recording of a particular meeting. Planning conducted that municipal vulnerability preparedness sessions, two of them, in late November that were attended. And the shepherd of that project is the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And they will issue a report as a result of those two four-hour sessions. Library, interestingly, had reported that they have obtained six hotspots. And Leila Johnson brought one to show to all the department heads so that these are restricted to town use. But they're, you know, they fill a need for those families and patrons of the library that don't have Internet access at home. So, they're free to be borrowed, limited to town residents. Recreation reported, of course, that the basketball season is upon us. And they're very busy with those registrations. And last but not least, the Health Department reported on the costs of -- we had an extended discussion, actually, on the cost of trash and recycling products and how those costs are going up astronomically, really. But I don't want to steal any of Amy's thunder because she's here tonight to report on some other issues that are pending in the Health Department. So, I also had a couple of meetings with people from MGM or their consultant. It's an agency called Civic Economics that is doing a one-year look back on the impacts on the local communities that have a nexus to the casino. So, they gave me a list of the criteria and the categories into which they're going to do some research. And there'll be more to follow on that. And I also attended a, apparently by virtue of being town manager, acting, or otherwise, I have a seat on the Local Community Mitigation Grant Board of the casino. So, that -- they have quarterly meetings. And they had one a week or 10 days ago. And actually, it was very interesting. The discussion centered around the tax revenue generated from gaming. And it's 25% that gets paid to the Commonwealth. And 6 and 1/4% of that gets turned back to the various regions that have, that are hosting casinos, if you will. And there's a plethora of grants available for any one of a number of impacts in your community. But there has to be a nexus drawn. So, we'll have to do a little bit of research to try to make those connections. But there's, like I said, there's, this year, in this fiscal year, I think they said there's $11 million to be distributed. So, it's good news. MGM revenue is doing its part, I guess, to mitigate the impacts on the communities. The things they're looking at mostly are traffic and workforce development and things of that nature. So, I don't know how significant those impacts here in Eastland Meadow might be. But we'll certainly investigate and find out if there's an option for us to pursue any of that grant funding. Thank you.
And questions?
Question?
Yes.
With regards to the casino mitigation, who's going to be doing the traffic study for that? Or who's responsible for it?
Well, I don't have their paperwork yet from Civic Economics. I mean, they're conducting this study. And they're working with all the communities that are considered the local mitigation communities. I suspect the first drop-off point would be the Police Department here. But they're going to follow up our -- I just meant, the fellow's name was Houston. And he's from Tulsa. And I'm talking to him about driving from the casino to Eastland Meadow because he said he took such a circuitous route. And I said, "Oh, it's a straight shot. You just go by Forest Park." Never knowing he's from Tulsa, Oklahoma. Of course, he's looking at me like, "Oh, isn't this lovely?" But anyway, Mr. Houston is going to be following up with me with all of the paperwork that will, you know, elaborate on the criteria that they want to do research on. But I think traffic would go to police first or DPW. I don't know how we measure that here, or if we do.
If the civic works for MGM?
Correct.
Right, so we're going to do our own independent study as well?
Well, we could if you think that that's necessary. I mean, they're a consultant for MGM. But MGM has the burden of determining what the impact is based on their operation. So, they've, I don't know how the criteria were decided. But for example, in addition to traffic, they're also talking about, well, he, this Mr. Houston asked me if we had a meals tax, a local meals tax. Because if you do, and you can determine that that meals tax is less in the year since MGM opened, then they would say, "Well, okay, then MGM is detracted from your dining revenue." And that would be an adverse impact to this town, for example, or to any town that had that. So, it was just a very general conversation. I mean, we can go as far as you'd like to. But I think that, I think that even though they're consultants for MGM, I had the feeling that it's an objective resource. But if we determine it's not, or there's some question about that, we can ask any questions we'd like.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to number six, approval of minutes. In your packet, you have the minutes for the November 12 open session. If you haven't had a chance, I'll ready to look them over. Please do so now. And if there are no changes to be made, I will entertain a motion to approve the November 12 minutes.
I move to accept the minutes on November 12, 2019? Second?
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the November 12, 2019 minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, six to zero.
Great job, Jackie.
Yeah, great job, Jackie.
Okay, we are up to communication, correspondence, and announcements. Does anyone have any announcements or correspondence to discuss? Hearing none. Then we will move to number eight, which are, which is a public hearing for the approval of a change of officers, director, and LLC managers for 99 West, doing business as 99 Restaurant and Pub. However, that is scheduled for 6:30. And we are required to wait until that appointed time. So, I will move now, I'll entertain a motion, rather, to move out of order, to move further into the agenda and return at approximately 6:30 to public hearings.
So moved. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded to move out of order. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now we will move to licensing matters under orders of the day. The approval of change of officers, directors, and LLC managers for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC, doing business as Chipotle, 42 Center Square. And for the clarification of the public, what I just read sounds very much the same as what I previously read. However, the public hearing is not a change of manager on the floor of the restaurant. It's a change of officers and directors at the corporate level of the business. So, that said, then, do we have representatives here from Chipotle?
A lawyer is stuck in traffic. I am here, but she is on her way. Unfortunately, she got stuck. But she should be here very shortly.
Okay. Want to set that aside, then, and continue to move?
Sure.
Okay, we'll set that aside until council is here for Chipotle. And we will move to 9B, financial matters, the quarterly budget report for FY '20. With us this evening, we have our Finance Director, Sarah Menard. Good evening.
So, since this is the first quarterly report that I give, I'm just going to give a brief overview. And then you can let me know where you have questions or how you want me to maybe come back with additional information if I don't have enough of what you might need. So, you're welcome. In your packet, you will see that there's a year-to-date budget report. And it is a summary level. So, it will show each department, just one line for each department, and therefore giving a total. So, this is for the general fund in total. And at a quick glance, you can see that, at the grand total, that it says that we are 76.9% of the budget has been used. This report is through October 31, 2019, which is 33.3% of the year. So, one of the many reasons as to why that is higher than that 33% is that there are certain things that we encumber or accrue for during the year. So, for example, on the school budget, we encumber all payroll for all of the regularly salaried and scheduled teachers and employees. So, you will see, actually, that the school percentage is 96.7%. And it's just because the majority of their expenses is actually payroll-related. And so, that's why it gives that appearance, even though we haven't actually used all of that at this point. And then the other major driver of that is that some of our contracts that we have are on maybe an annual basis. And so, in this first quarter of the year, we do pay a lot of those because a lot of them are on a fiscal year basis. So, there are a lot of payments that we made in July that it's just a one-time payment. But that's why it will look more lopsided that we have gone further. So, at a quick glance here, you will see that we currently have three departments that are currently in a deficit, or at the appearance of a deficit. It is legal services, the workers' compensation, and the liability insurance departments. At this point, legal, we have gone over, depending on how the rest of the year goes. That difference might grow. But we've had a lot of different legal things that have come up during this year that many of you are aware of. Concerning the workers' compensation department, that one, at this point, is higher. And part of the reason is that we had a workers' compensation audit that was completed last year. We had a very large swing in our payroll when they did that audit that caused our premium to go up substantially. We just had the workers' compensation audit done about two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, they came out to do it. I have not gotten the results back from that yet. Typically, what happens, other than last year, but all the other years before that, is that we wind up getting an adjustment to our premium. And we usually get a credit back as a result of that audit. So, I'm hoping that that's what we will have this year. Another thing that often happens is that our insurance carrier often gives a rebate or a dividend of some kind, usually in January or February. And so, we might be getting one of those, too. But I don't know at this point. So, right now, it's more on my watch list for this department. But we'll see, and as the year continues, as to whether or not that then we will need to make some adjustments for it. And then the liability insurance department also could wind up getting one of those dividend rebates in January or February. One good thing within that department is that the unemployment is doing better than we originally budgeted. So, hopefully, that it continues to do better and therefore reducing that, which is also why we have that encumbrance in there, is for the unemployment, is our guess for it. So, as that unemployment is actually less, then we should see that deficit actually decrease. Now, when looking at all of the departments in total, those are the only ones that currently show a deficit. There are two others that I am projecting to go into a deficit. And there's a third one that I have my eyes closely on because it is a very tight budget. And I am concerned because it could go either way, depending how the year goes. So, those three departments are the Town Council budget, the Town Manager budget, and the Dispatch budget. So, the Town Council budget, I am projecting that it will have a deficit. And that deficit, the main driver, is because we have hired the third-party consultant for the Town Manager search, which was something that was not budgeted. So, that would be the driver and the deficit there. The Town Manager budget, I'm also predicting a deficit in there due to the turnover and whatnot. And then the last one, the Dispatch budget, at the moment, it is projected that it's going to be extremely close. But I don't think that it's going to be a deficit. But if we have something major happen, you know, there's a major blizzard or something of that kind of nature that then we have a need to have more dispatchers called in, or heaven forbid, they all get the flu, something terrible like that, that then that will impact there. But we do have that we, myself and the Dispatch Director will be meeting shortly to pull together our application for the E-911 grant for this coming year. So, some expenses that we have budgeted for here, we might be able to get reimbursed with for the grant. So, there is that hope. But we don't know yet what we will get awarded. So, it's just on my radar as something that I need to watch closely. And that's it that I thought to give to you. But if there are questions, please let me know. And I'm happy to try to answer them the best that I can.
Thank you. Does anyone at the table here have a question they'd like to ask?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Sarah?
Sure.
I've got, actually, a few questions.
Sure.
The chair doesn't mind. What we're missing from this is the Enterprises and Revolving Funds?
Oh, sure. Okay.
So, I think it's important to have that information so we have a complete, in addition to the capital, which is not in here?
Okay. That's fine. I was just requested for the general fund. So, absolutely, I will bring that for the next meeting.
I think, yeah, just to, that gives us all the information we need.
Sure.
My questions regarding your report. Utility seems to be way out of whack for a number of areas. And do you have an understanding of why? Has anyone given you that information as to why it's so high?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. So, utilities, what we did is that for every utility account that we have, we looked at the past 12 months. And we encumbered for the full amount based on last year's actual activity. So, you have all of those in there currently and a prediction as to the, so, and then we also have, so those are all the blanket POs that are in there. And then we also have the projected solar credit. So, right now, even with the full encumbrance for the year, it's only at 71%. So, that gives us, actually, a lot of room should prices change significantly, should usage be significantly different than last year. But it's because the full amount of the utilities was encumbered.
Okay. That brings me to one of my last questions. Can we get an additional column in this report that shows encumbered and a straight real number rather than encumbered? Because encumbered is, it's a projection of the future cost. I'd like to see the real cost to date.
Yep. So, if you look on here, we have the town, the account number. Then it's the description. Then you'll see the original appropriation. That is what was approved at the Town Council meeting on May 28. Then the transfers adjustments, then revised budget. Then the next is your year-to-date expended. That is your actual expenses for this year.
So, that's the actual?
Yes. And then the second, then the next column there is the encumbrance. So, the encumbrance is either something that we've already committed to, so a signed contract that we have. And therefore, we've encumbered that, hey, we've already promised these funds. Or like the utilities, that we know that we have this every month and it's approximately this, so we already put that in there. And then that final, then the next column is the available budget. So, it's the revised budget minus the year-to-date expended minus the encumbrance gives you the available. And then the percentage is the available as a percentage of your, yes.
I've got another question.
Okay, go ahead.
It's something the council, who doesn't have objection here. Workers' compensation. What's been our experience? Is this high or low?
This is a bit high. This is high.
Do we know why?
As a result of that audit. So, that audit last year, it was an increase in covered payroll of close to $1 million. And so, as a result, then that affects your premium. So, then this year, they're looking at it. And we're going to see what it comes out with, with the covered payroll. I have tried to go through it, any, so we have to cover our actual payroll. But then also, if you have contractors or whatnot that you use that don't have certificates of liability insurance, then that is part of your workers' comp that needs to be considered for covered salaries. So, I have gone through and looked at any of those that are higher dollar amounts and have gone and reached out to either the vendor or the department that use that vendor to get those certificates of liability insurance coverage. So, then I can provide them to the auditor to therefore reduce how much is in our covered payroll.
Okay. Are we looking at different insurers to do this work? Or are we just stuck with this same insurance company?
We're not stuck with the insurance company. The policy year is July 1 through June 30. So, by all means, that we can change at that point. The workers' comp is the coverage over the year that we just had. So, that's the audit that they do, as for the year we just completed.
But they're looking at, they're looking at higher costs and premiums for us?
Right, because we had higher payroll, yes.
Right.
I'll pick up on Tom's statement about, wouldn't it be nice if we had one more column than the percent reflected, they revised the year-to-date expended?
If you would like me to do that, I can. But then it's not, so it's up to you. This is a munis-generated report, which I can give you. If you want me to add another column, then I will export this into Excel and have to add that column, which I can do. But it's going to look slightly different because it's not coming out of the system. If you're comfortable with that, I'm more than happy to do that for you.
Well, the reason I suggest it is because this is really an accounting report, and an excellent accounting report, and an accounting report on an accrual basis because of the encumbrances. But from a management information report, it's like unusable for us. The percentage is meaningless without you being here. And thank you for being here and addressing all those because that's perfect. That's what we're missing. But from our perspective, we'd love to see a percentage of one-third of the year.
Absolutely.
Just because if we see that, we don't have to worry about the encumbrances. We trust you on the encumbrances.
No problem. Then I will, then I will go and do that for the next report, if that's all right.
And that would change it into a management information report from my perspective.
Or would you like me to do it for this one as well? To, and just email that out?
No, I wouldn't for that.
Going for it for the second quarter.
Going for it.
Okay.
It's not a snapshot of real time.
Yeah.
That's what I thought the other column would add, too.
Any questions?
No. Being the first budget that I've had to dig into, I had questions and you guys took care of them. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Again, an additional question. The transfers and adjustments?
Yeah.
One of them is substantial. What did we transfer or adjust for the accounting office? And why? It's $53,000.
Oh, that's not the accounting office. That's the assessors.
Assessors?
And that is the...
That's your office, though?
Well, yes, it's within the finance realm, yes. So, that is for the real estate and personal property. Remember that we have that separate fund, Remember that we have that separate fund, the separate account number now on the, in our budget to be able to account for the cyclical valuations and certifications that need to be done, so that's what that is. So that came over from, for that fund. It's the $53,000, it matches the town council budget. If you look on the last page of the general fund budget, it's right there next to capital projects and stabilization.
Okay. And one last question. We received a document today for supporting documentation for this meeting, and it was the budget document, and the first page of it said proposed budget. We already voted on and approved a final budget for this town.
Yes.
As of June 1st, why does it still say proposed?
The information that I believe you were provided today was the copy of the report that had been attached to the minutes on the May 28th meeting. We, we don't, at this point, we have never done a, an updated one that says final budget and presented that anywhere. It's, once it's approved at the town council meeting, then we input it into Munis, and we've only ever had on the website what that was with the minutes. If that's something that the council would like going forward, by all means, I can do that to say it. But the only thing that was different from the proposed budget versus the actual was the stabilization.
Right. What's missing is, we've had, we usually get town reports, and town reports reflect a real budget that was passed. We haven't gotten a town report in two years, that's not something in your purview. But without that town report, we don't know what the approved and actual budget is. I don't like looking at something that says proposed six months out from when it was approved. So that's just my personal opinion, and I don't know if the other councils have an issue whether or not, but...
I would say it might be appropriate to change the cover page, but I would, I would really not be comfortable if there were to be any changes beyond that May 28th. There shouldn't be. Once the budget is set, the budget's the budget. You can have variances, but you don't typically change the budget. So I feel, I feel, I would feel comfortable with the date changed so that we know, we know we're looking at the final, that one person's perspective.
And the wording change on the cover page.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I would as well.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Just more of a point of just curiosity or clarification. I have 300 education, there, am I missing? Nope, there's no, is that by design, we don't have a breakdown of that? It's just so voluminous?
Well, it is approximately 15 pages.
Okay. Just making sure if I missed something, that's all.
But no, I only included all the other departments because those are the ones that the town council has control over to make adjustments. The Board of Education, it's a one-line item technically, so that's why I only showed the one-line item. It doesn't really matter what their differences are within.
Got it. Oh, you explained, thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, sorry.
We appreciate that, too.
There's no point having to keep looking through those.
I missed a few pages, I went from 299 to 420. Am I missing something?
The black box.
The black box, there you go.
Any other questions, concerns?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Is your council here yet? No.
Public hearing.
We, are we able to go to public hearing? Is the applicant here from 99? So I would, at this point...
To the chair, I don't believe it was necessary because of the scope of this application. It was given to the ABCC first for approval, not approval, but to review and say it's in compliance with the MGL, Chapter 138. So then it was given to us, the local licensing authority, to approve, but the ABCC looked it over first, and that was in the packet that you have, too.
So then we can go forward with it. All right. Well, then we are beyond the appointed time, so we can do that. So I will open the public hearing. This is a hearing for the approval of change of officers, I'm sorry, for the approval of change of officers slash directors slash LLC managers and change of ownership interest for 99 West LLC, doing business as 99 Restaurant and Pub. Council members from left to right are councilors Page, Anderson, Hill, Kane, O'Connor, and Henry. I'll ask the clerk now to read the legal notice into the record.
Notice issued by the chapter 138 general laws that 99 West LLC DBA 99 Restaurant and Pub, 390 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, has applied for change of officers, directors, LLC managers, and change of ownership interest, LLC members, partners, trustees. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, November 26, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the Council on Aging media room 328 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, for the council. Jeanne Quagletti, clerk of the council.
Thank you. The applicant, and you've explained, is not present this evening, and you've also explained the rationale for the proposed change in that the ABCC has already done a thorough vetting of...
Which I think is common with corporations.
Yes. So that said, this is an opportunity now for anyone in, present this evening, to offer input if they would like. When doing so, please come to the table and speak into the microphone, identifying yourself and your address, and kindly remember to address the council and not anyone else in the room. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to speak to this topic? Okay, seeing none. I will close the public hearing. The council will now discuss the matter, and since there's no public input that's been provided, we have four options before us. Approve the matter, deny the matter, continue the hearing if by law a second reading is required, I don't believe it is in this case, or continue the hearing in order to take the matter under advisement. That said, floor is open to any counselor who has questions or input. Yes, sir.
I also reviewed it, reviewed it in detail, and I was quite satisfied with exactly what the town clerk said, that it seems to be very, very routine, and I didn't, I didn't spot anything that raised any issues with me. It would have been nice if they'd been here, but I found it fine.
Anyone else?
Just a comment, and again, it's, I'm a stickler for that. Whenever something is presented to the council, there ought to be a person, a spokesperson addressing this issue to us to answer questions. In the future, they're going to give us information or ask us to vote on something, they need to be present. That's in the council rules, and I think that's a good practice.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the change of manager, change of officers slash directors slash LLC managers, and change of ownership interest for 99 West LLC, doing business as 99 Restaurant and Pub.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes 6-0. Okay. Counsel is here now for 99, I'm sorry, for Chipotle. So we'll move now into licensing matters, the approval of change of officers, directors, LLC managers for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC, doing business as Chipotle, 42 Center Square.
Good evening, council president, members of the council.
Megan Smith with McDermott, Will Dian Miller. Let me just apologize for being late. I left Boston at 2:30 this afternoon and bumper to bumper all the way to Charlton, Mass. So, but here we are.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Exactly. Happy Thanksgiving. With me today is Amanda Adams, she's the GM at this location. We're before you tonight to seek a change of LLC managers for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC. We're removing two LLC managers, adding a new one, Helen Kaminsky. It's just to reflect some internal corporate changes. Nothing's changing to the operations of the restaurant, so...
Okay. Any questions? This seems pretty straightforward for a four-and-a-half-hour ride.
Happy to be here, though, and, you know, answer everyone's questions.
I hope the traffic going the other way is a little kinder to you. Any, no questions? Then I will entertain a motion for this.
Let me do it. All right, let's see, which one is this one? Okay. I make a motion to approve a change of officers, directors, LLC managers for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC DBA Chipotle, 24 Center Square.
42, isn't it?
42, 42.
I will second the motion.
The motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Your car lights didn't even turn off.
They did. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, we are moving now to bold business. Number one, the recommendation of Town Council Bylaw Review Committee regarding a bylaw for liquor license offenses and penalties.
I think I'm the...
I think you're the designated...
I think I'm the offended person. We, we reviewed the, let me see which one this is. This is the liquor license offense penalty. We reviewed the liquor license offenses and penalties that was provided to the bylaw committee from the council. The council previously indicated that it should become a bylaw. In looking at it, we determined that the appropriate place for this bylaw was in Part III general legislation, there is a section alcoholic beverages, and there is a section in there that talks about the alcoholic beverages laws with respect to sanitation, safety, things like that, things that were not covered here in the, in this proposal. So we would propose to append it there and present it that way to the town, to the, to the public hearing.
Okay. Fair enough. So do you anticipate when that public hearing will be?
I believe we suggested that it would be January 14th.
Do you want to say? So we, since that's when we'll take the action, we have, we don't need any action this evening?
Well, I think what we're doing is, the bylaw committee is resubmitting it with its recommendation to approve it and place it in the bylaws at this appropriate location.
Okay.
And looking for your approval so that we can go forth and put it on the, on the schedule for public hearing in January.
All right, so then we will take a motion for that.
And I think I can probably do that, right?
You can.
Yeah. Since, it's going to come back to me anyway.
It's like a boomerang.
I move, we move forward to create a new bylaw to address liquor license offenses and penalties and schedule a public hearing for said bylaw for January 14th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do you see any? Motion passes unanimously, 6-0. Okay, we are now down to new business, and we have the Board of Health update and quarterly report, and we have our health director, Amy Petrosky, and Dr. Sarah Perez-McAdoo with us this evening.
Hi, Mary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us to come and share with you an update on our work, but I wanted to give you just a little bit of a perspective in terms of the Board of Health. You know, the Board, now I'm the, I've been the chairman of the Board of Health now for three years, so I've been very fortunate to come before you and to be working on behalf of the town. Our Board of Health, as you may know, is a volunteer board of health that is appointed by the town manager for a three-year period of time. And our board has several decades of experience in community health, in public health, as well as in, in health and medicine in general. So what's most important about that is that we all are residents of the community and have, some of us have grown up here, some of us have been raising families here, so we're deeply invested in the health of the community. And we know that the healthier community is, the more likely that people are going to thrive across all stages of their lives. So over the last three years, we've had the privilege as a Board of Health to be working closely with the Health Department to really implement the mission and vision of the Board of Health for a healthy and prosperous East Long Meadow. So given that, one of the things that we are excited to always share with you is that we have our quarterly action plan that we submit to the town council. And really, that action plan is really reflecting the work that we have been doing, what we plan to do, the goals, and how we track the impact of the work that we do to protect and to promote health in our town. And in terms of the action plan, we really see it as a tool for transparent communication and accountability of our work. We hold ourselves accountable and we check the work that we do there, and that is how we're sharing with you what we're doing every day. And most importantly, you're able to use that tool to not only look at our work, but be able to find opportunities where we might be able to collaborate together and also for other health, for other departments in the town, to also look for opportunity for us to work together. That really reflects our shared commitment for the health of the town and for the town overall. So that's overall the work that we've been really doing, and I really want to spend the time today really giving Amy the floor, because there's a lot of work that has been done over the course of the year. She can provide some of that historical context to some of this work and provide some important updates that I think really reflect what you've been helping us with and supporting the work, and we're excited to share that with you today. So I'm going to give it to you now.
All right. So thank you for having us. In lieu of the fourth quarter report before it finalizes, Mary thought this would be a great idea for us to come and kind of share some of what's been going on in person. So just as kind of a framework, the objectives of the Health Department are set on four primary components. The mission and vision of the Board of Health, so the direction that they give me, the state mandates, which is the direction the state gives me, the directives from the town manager in terms of budget or objectives that she'd like me to accomplish in the town, and then the, what the residents have asked for. So those are kind of the objectives that we have worked on in the last year, or worked within in the last year. And we really spend time focusing on how we can maximize the services for our East Long Meadow residents to accomplish a long-term strategic goal for the public health of our community. One of the ways we do that is by seeking grants, one of them is multi, multiple multi-year grants, using our operating budget to its fullest potential and to create sustainability within the department. So we're creating processes that make our work more fluid, and then meeting the mandatory requirements of the state. So instead of that long quarterly report that I sent you, I tried to consolidate into a nice PowerPoint presentation with some photos to show you some of the activities that we've been doing this year. For anybody out here, there are copies of the PowerPoint there if you'd like to follow We can stop at any time for questions. Okay. So some of you might remember that we're here, in 2017 I came, and I've kind of laid out a picture of where we were kind of falling short on our inspectional mandated services. The graph on slide one shows in 2017 where we were in terms of how many inspections we were able to accomplish that year, and you can see the trend here from 2017 to 2018 to 2019. There's a dramatic increase in the amount of inspections that we've been able to accomplish, and we are now in full compliance with the state mandates. So that, that's, for me, is great. It means our residents are enjoying, and visitors are enjoying food that has been checked, and the businesses have been educated. It means our parents can feel safer sending their kids to camps in East Long Meadow because we have an inspector there weekly. It means that our pools are safer to swim in because we've made sure that the people who are there operating those pools are, know what they're doing. And one of the great things about this slide for me, it's great, we're meeting our mandatory inspections, but for me, it's the, the education that's been able to happen here, because we can't be onsite. Inspections are great, but we can't be on sites at our restaurants, at our pools, in our camps, in our body arts establishments all the time. But what we have been able to do is create a partnership with them. They call us now when there are problems because they know there's not, this isn't a tit-for-tat or, you know, arbitrary inspection. We're a partnership, and that is what's in the best interest of our businesses and in the best interest of our residents and consumers. We're a partnership, and that is what's in the best interest of our businesses and the best interest of our residents and consumers. And one of the other great things is, um, well, I think that, that speaks for itself. Oh, the other thing is that you can see on the housing complaint inspections, our residents know we're doing a lot more than I think what they thought we did in 2015 or 2016. We're doing 277 housing and complaint inspections a year. So they're using us. Those, those inspections are ones that our residents have to reach out to us to, to start the process on, whereas the other ones, a lot of them are mandatory. Then we also have a, a category here that didn't exist before this year. It's the free tobacco inspections that are grant-funded. So we have, um, it's part of a grant that we've applied for and have been accepted to, to have people come in and do underage compliance checks in our establishments to make sure our businesses aren't selling tobacco to minors. In the last round of underage checks, which started, um, in July, we've had five sales, five out of 12. So 12 establishments have been inspected, and 12 of those have sold to minors. So I think we have a lot of work that we can be doing on that. So that's a goal that I'm gonna be looking at. How can we better educate our retailers? How can Donna get out there more often to, to help with this? So we can move on to, to slide two. Any questions on slide one?
Amy, I have two questions.
Sure.
The housing complaints, it, I think, uh, is something that really affects the whole town.
Correct.
That addresses, uh, the deterioration of yards and homes. So that when people complain, they say this person's got, you know, the grass is two feet high, et cetera. You've been addressing those issues.
Correct.
Through the state?
Well, so we used, in order to enforce them, we're using, um, both the bylaws and mass general law for, for public nuisance complaints. If it's an abandoned house, we've been using the Attorney General's Abandoned Building, uh, program with the Attorney General's Office. We have an attorney assigned to us who we've been working with to move these properties. On our website, if you're interested, uh, we have a, uh, an ability to see all the houses in their abandoned state, and then after they've been put back on the tax rolls and sold. So you can see kind of the success stories, uh, that we're working on. And I, I don't have a number for how many of those were in the, uh, abandoned property initiative, but I can certainly get that for you if you're interested.
I am interested.
Okay.
I'd like to, I mean, we've had issues in the past with the banks not owning the responsibility for, um, maintaining the properties that they've repossessed. And I don't wanna see that reoccur. It'd be nice to know where it came from, how it's addressed.
Sure. So specifically, you want the numbers of properties that have been in the receiver, re-ship program and then have graduated beyond the receivership program, and what's still outstanding?
And the, and the banks or the companies that own them?
So if they're not in the receivership program?
So the banks that own, so if they're in the receivership program, there are banks that are responsible to the attorney, with the Attorney General?
Right.
Uh, you want the names of the banks?
I think that's important to know, if it's local banks, uh...
Okay.
No properties.
I don't, I mean, again, my opinion, I, I don't think the town should be doing business with banks that don't, uh, own up to their end of the bargain and maintain the properties in our town. If that's the case, I'd like to see it stopped.
Okay.
Through the chair, can I, I'd just like to, um, give you a little bit of information I have. Some of these banks are out of to, out of town, and obviously with the, um, real estate market somewhat compromised, we are gonna see an increase, these numbers move north as they have. But, um, that being said, out of tank, out of town banks are hiring local real estate companies to help sell the property and manage the property. So at least it gives us a gateway to be able to communicate with somebody that's sitting here rather than on the West Coast.
Right. And the attorneys, that's one of the benefits of the Attorney General's program. They're really able to maneuver and get access to those banks in a way that we, we haven't been able to previously. So, um, and then they do oftentimes give them a local person to go and clean the yard, or to go and mow the lawn, or to do the things, property management, that they should have been doing historically. So just to reiterate, I'm gonna get you, the number of properties that were, have total, been in the receivership program, the numbers that have graduated, how many remain, and the names of the banks of all the, um, own, of the bank-owned properties in the receivership program?
The ones, the ones that haven't taken responsibility for that, yeah.
Okay. And, uh, email, or would you like me to report back on that?
I think an email, a report to, to all of us, this one.
Okay. Sure. Any other questions on slide one?
Chair.
Pool inspections.
Yes.
Are those homeowner pools, are those cabin pools?
Those are public pools.
Basically, Pineol, uh, the high school, um, I'm trying to think of any other...
So that we have, um, Pineol High School, uh, club, uh, the health clubs have spas or pools. Uh, and I believe that is it. There's like five or six of them.
Okay. I, I assume that. I didn't think you were going house to house looking for pools. I figured the number would be a lot higher.
Yes.
That's all on that slide.
I have a question on our subject. Okay, just for clarification purposes, um, we, we know we haven't acquired any, any more pools in town.
Correct.
But obviously, the number of inspections has jumped from seven to 27.
Correct. So we're doing, the mandates, we're doing the mandated reporting. We're also doing complaint and reporting, so it depends on, so someone calls. Those also include all re-inspections. So if Donna went and there was a critical violation, she would have to go back. So we're now, instead of those seven, we're now identifying issues that we need to then go back and confirm completion. So that's why that number has gotten higher.
Well, without any more pools, obviously, the service is more in demand.
Correct, yes.
So.
Yeah. Slide two?
Slide two.
Slide two. So as I mentioned earlier, one of the ways the Health Department aims for long-term sustainability is in seeking grants. So slide two is, um, a report of all of the income that we've generated, um, and including our permit revenue. We do not intentionally include any of the fees and fines that we've issued throughout the year, which is valued at, at, right now at about $13,000. Because I don't wanna ever to make it seem like our fees or fines are for income generating purposes. They're really a compliance-based tool, which, why they're not included here. So you can see that we have the recycling, I think we've reported to you on, uh, at least mo, a few of these, the, um, mattress recycling grant, the recycling barrel grant, uh, the RDP grant, um, the E and R grant, which is, we're getting the Health Needs Assessment off of. And I'll go into these a little bit more detailed in the future slides. But really, the, one of the key things I'd like to point out here is that we've generated $340,000 of income in fiscal year 19. And by the end of the year, we will find out about another $72,000 grant that we should find out by the end of the year. So just in comparison, our total operating budget this year is $300,000. So we've brought in approximately $40,000 more than what we've generated. And this slide does not include savings. So the trash savings that we'll be talking about later is also not included in this slide. This is just pure income. So a couple of these slides will just exemplify some of the things we've been able to do for our residents with this income. So we used to pay by the ton to dispose of our mattresses to a landfill. And we received a grant to recycle those mattresses, and that has multiple, um, benefits. One, they're not going to the landfill. All of the components are reused and recycled, uh, for other purposes. Some of those are listed, um, on your slides. In addition, uh, DE, this program is now gonna be sustainable. So we are charging the residents $15, just like we have for eternity, to throw away their mattress. We're continuing to charge them those $15. It's in an account. So once the DEP grant money runs out, we're able to sustain that program with the income that we've generated. And what, one of the other great things is, uh, DE, I'll be here in December to talk about DEP's master plan, but one of the ideas is this is gonna be a requirement. So we got in, in it ahead of the curve. We got grant funding to create the program, and we've been, now been able to sustain that program, uh, before DEP ever made it a mandate and required it as a, at a cost to the general fund. So I think that timing couldn't have worked out any better. Slide three. So the RDP grant, um, RDP is probably not something that we've talked about. RDP is money that we apply for, and we use our recycling programming as a way to access these funds. So the recycling programs we do, the more money that we, you get points and the more money you're able to get. So with that money, uh, we've been able to run significant programs for our residents. We have compost bins that we have greatly reduced, so we pay 90 of it, and the resident pays 20, they're $25 for our residents. We have a rain barrel, uh, battery recycling, the household hazardous waste recycling that went from one day a year, that is now whenever the place is open, I think it's four days a week. We have all the recycling mailers and the recycling, um, trash carts that are all free to our residents. So all that money that comes in goes directly into programming for our residents, which is fantastic, right? All at zero cost to the general fund. Any questions on the RDP money? Okay. Trash cart update. Oh, sorry, yes.
I have a question, actually, Amy, it's, uh, back on mattress recycling.
Sure.
Where, where is, where is, where are those $15 fees going now?
So they go into a revolving account. So it's transitioned from the general fund to a revolving account, and that's the account that will be used...
What revolving account is that?
The number?
The name of it?
I don't know.
Is, is, is the mattress revolving account?
Well, it can't be.
I don't, you know, I don't see any of the money go in. I just see the money going out. So I can get you the name of the account.
There is a revolving account for the Health Department.
For the Health, okay. Health Department revolving account.
But I don't know.
I don't, I think the money is separate from, from that, but I can get you an answer.
It's tracked, Sarah tracks all that.
As long as there is a, a...
Oh, yes.
Formal revolving account.
Correct. Sarah, Sarah set that up.
We can watch it next time, next...
Quarter two, you'll see it.
Next quarter, we'll see.
Yeah. I, I personal knowledge of, there is no mattress revolving account, because it would've come before the council. The creation of a revolving account, uh, requires a bylaw, which would've come before the council to vote on. So the, she must put it in a different account.
Okay.
Unfortunately, she's not here to talk to it.
Yeah.
But I'd like to know what account it is.
I can, I can get you that answer.
I have a question on the, um, the mattress disposal recycle. If I wanted to do that, do I just leave it at the curb, or do I...
Uh, you bring it to the transfer station.
I got you.
Okay. Yes.
And so, do you have to pay for that ahead of time? Go to Town Hall?
You pay there.
You pay at the...
Transfer station.
And you pay by check?
Correct. I don't, yeah, I don't...
I don't believe that except cash, if I'm correct.
Yeah, I'm sure Sarah would frown upon that. But it's the DPW workers that are collecting the money, so I don't know the intricacies of the collection of money. But I'm sure if they were coming in with cash, Sarah would hit, say, uh...
Question, I know. Okay, just question again on, uh, on the mattress, but, uh, like, does a company right here, Mattress Firm, for instance, you, or, or any local place, and they charge you, uh, you know, a fee to take your mattress out, do they participate? What do they do with the mattresses? They bring them to the, they pay the $15?
I am sure that they have a corporate, they generate, so, I'm sure they generate mattresses in a, a quantity that they have their own mechanisms for disposal.
So if this is something good for the town, it appears the way we have, like, let's say, you know, people don't have trucks or what have you, how do they get, like, a king-size, um, box of, a mattress over? They strap it to the top of the car, or, or is there kind of a, an extra fee that charged for a service to pick it up? Maybe charge $25 and, and, uh, prepay it, and then the town can pick it up and get even more mattresses?
We're gonna create entrepreneurship here. I, I don't know of any sort, I'm sure there are handy people in town who would happily do that for a fee. We, we don't have...
I'm just curious about that option. All right, thanks.
Okay.
Can I, through the chair?
Yes.
Just, sorry, I'm gonna go back to your grants. I'm just curious, you've got a list of them here, which ones are recurring and which ones were one, one time?
Oh, that's a good question. So, um...
Mattresses?
I don't know if that's an annual recurring for a certain amount of time. Liz applies for those. I know the barrel grant is one-time, RDP is recurring, E and R grant is one-time, permit revenue is recurring. And the $72,000 one we're waiting on would be recurring. You're welcome. So the trash carts, what, what everybody wants to know about. Everybody has their trash cart now. If they're, we anticipate that, you know, I, I think Pat Henry last, uh, meeting, I wasn't here, but mentioned some concern over the disposal process. These carts are now, our Republic can pick them up through a semi-automated process, so they still have to get out of the car, but there is an arm to collect them. Republic was very excited about this. They feel like it will increase the speed of our services because the guys aren't lifting. Some of the winter delays that we've had might be, uh, avoided because of this type of service. And we also do expect the savings that we've seen over the last year, the $34,000 savings, which we'll talk about, uh, to increase. Because as much as we tried to alert all the residents who had barrels that were greater than 35 gallons, that they had barrels greater than 35 gallons, we, we couldn't possibly get to everyone, which is why some residents had a little bit of shock when they got these barrels and they were 35 gallons. So that, to me, shows that people, uh, still, as much as we tried to get compliance, weren't compliant. So I do expect to see the savings for trash, uh, the tonnage savings to continue to increase. There was a small delay with the rollout due to some production issues, um, and a few delivery missteps, which I'm sure you all had people explaining to you, but it is all resolved at this point. Any other questions on the recycle, the trash rollout that I can answer?
Question, please.
Yeah.
One that I get, um, it seems like at least every other day. What do people do with the old blue bins or, uh, recycling bins?
Oh, if they want us, we can collect those blue bins. We can certainly reuse them.
So they call the Health Department?
Yeah, we'll pick them up.
They put them out at the curb?
So when they call, we'll let them know the day that we're coming, we'll ask them to leave them wherever, they'll let us know. Some people want us to go get them on their steps, some people wanna leave them on the curb. Whatever system works for them, we're happy to accommodate.
Thank you.
And, uh, Friday is the last day to recycle the, well, tomorrow, actually, because the transfer station isn't open, to recycle your old barrels. Any other questions on the trash carts? All right, trash disposal costs. So we have saved, uh, this year about 34 thou, a little over $34,000, um, on the trash disposal costs. And that is accounting for an increase in cost of tonnage disposal. So the cost to dispose of our trash went up, and we're still seeing a $34,000 savings. We do expect that to get bigger, as I just mentioned. And also, uh, an important piece is, we've also seen an increase in our green bag usage. So even though people are buying those green bags, we're still saving on top of that.
By more recycling.
Um, on the trash. Right? So even though people are buying those green bags more than they were, we're still seeing a reduction in that tonnage. Okay. I, I heard the...
Illegal disposal.
What'd you say?
Illegal disposal.
Okay.
With barrels being 35 gallon, you're not being able, have you seen an increase in it? I've noticed, um, obviously, I'm an outdoorsman, I go through the woods in the south side of town.
Yeah.
It seems like in the last year, there is a ton of illegal disposal. People backing into the woods and just dumping truckloads.
Yeah, I don't think that's a new problem, and the reason I say that is because, uh, and we'll discuss it a little later, but we had our community trash pickup day this year, and we collected a ton of trash. And that was in April. So it was probably halfway through, uh, the enforcement of the 35 gallons. But I think with the amount of woods we have, it's just the prime spot for people to dispose of things, unfortunately. But we do hope to have, uh, the trash pickup day again this April and to kinda do a little catch-up. But, um, nothing that has been reported to us has an increase. And when people see trash, they do call us. So we can cite it as a public nuisance. So, um, nothing I can make the connection to.
So when there is illegal disposal?
People call us.
People will call you, and then what you...
Find the property owner and require them to clean it up.
Boy, they're getting zapped.
Well, that's why you see that 277 calls and complaints.
What's the fine for illegal disposal?
Um, it's all the same as public nuisance. I mean, if we saw someone in the act, the police under the bylaws can find, uh, but for us, we cite it as public nuisance. And unfortunately, it goes to the owner of the property, not the person who actually dumped.
But they're still responsible for cleaning it up, then?
Correct. Okay. So the next two slides kind of go hand in hand. And what this is, uh, the CDC has, um, what they call the 10 essential services, we've discussed this, uh, briefly in the past. And, um, it's one of the, these are the services that the CDC says that Health Department should be providing to their communities. In addition to the CDC saying this, we've also discussed previously, uh, before you, that the state is moving towards requiring communities to meet these 10 essential services. In 2015, when I started here, we were trying to complete two of the 10, which was the inspections and the disease monitoring, but we weren't, like we said, completing those tasks. I'm really happy to announce that now in 2019, we're completing seven of the 10 of these. The se, the seven that are bolded on, uh, slide, uh, page nine are the nine that we're accomplishing right now. And I, what's really great about these is a lot of these translate into services to our residents, direct services to our residents. And that's what the, the slides after that speak directly to.
And I think that's some of the, what we've shared previously in terms of the work that we've been doing to make sure that these are being taken care of, because as the state is beginning to mandate, we'll actually be ahead of the curve. And not only already, um, being able to accomplish that, but being... being able to accomplish that, but being prepared to address anything else that's coming forward. So that's really a positive thing, so we're not gonna be catching up, we're behind, we're actually gonna be at the forefront, and that's part of the reason why we're able to work on the new grants that are coming up, is because we're actually ahead of it, so that's a very positive progress that we've made to be able to get these, you know, accomplish these goals.
Okay, so I know, I know you, everyone wants to get to Thanksgiving, so on the page ten, what's great about these, so these are some of the programming that we've been able to offer, and it's always in your quarterly report, I think the pictures might bring it home in a way that the quarterly report might be hard to follow, but on page ten, those, the top three, so the bike rodeo, the vaccination clinic, and the trash cleanup day, those were resident requests, those were, I see trash from my community, what can we do to address this? How can we get vaccinations available to our residents? And the bike rodeo, a woman came to the board of health and said, what can we do? People are riding on the wrong side of the road. So those three programs were specifically identified by our residents of ways we could help improve the health of everyday people. The tick and mosquito, car seat safety checks, those were things that we identified as a department as necessary. So the bike rodeo, last, 2018 was our first bike rodeo, we had eighteen participants, this year was our second, and we had over a hundred and fifty participants, so I think this is a, a great example of collaboration between town departments, this is not easy to pull off, it takes a lot of people coordinating, collaborating for this, it was REC, the DPW, police department, the health department, and we got such great feedback on this, and now we have lots of kids riding around with bikes that have been tuned up, helmets that fit, and helmets that are in compliance, so a hundred and fif, a hundred and fifty of them. The vaccination clinic, you can see the numbers here, the first year that we ran it, we had seventy-six vaccines given, this year we had two-hundred-and-fifty-nine vaccines given. It's, what's really great about this is that we are supporting, we are, twenty-three percent of our residents are over sixty, that means they're living on fixed incomes. These vaccines are not cheap to get some of them, and so we've been able to, with community funds and some health department programming funds, help our residents who wouldn't normally be able to afford these vaccines, and that not only helps that resident, who might be struggling financially to be able to afford those, but it also creates herd immunity for the residents who are unable to be vaccinated, such as infants or people with compromised immune systems. So that one simple vaccine affects a lot more than that one person, and so these are, this is one of my favorite events of the year, for, just for the community impact that it has. The trash pickup day, we, we discussed that, we were able to collect two one-ton dump trucks full of garbage from our streets, we had over forty volunteers, we had to turn people away, just because it was the first year, we wanted to make sure we were able to efficiently move them around town in a safe way. I believe next year, it's gonna be even bigger, and we're gonna have a greater impact on our streets. Tick and mosquitoes, we had a DPH intern that we were awarded, so some more free labor that we got, that's also not included in that grant. She was, her and I attended the camps, and we worked with our youth to help them educate their parents on how to properly do a tick check, when a tick check is necessary, and what products you can use to protect yourselves from ticks and mosquitoes while you're out. And we all know this year was a year that we all needed to be protecting ourselves from ticks and mosquitoes. We also collaborated on a community event that was very well-attended, where we had multiple community resources coming in, I mean, the health department has one piece of this, but there's also scientists that have another piece, there's also Lyme Disease Support Network that has another piece, we brought them all together for residents to come and ask questions about those specific things, and it was a very well-attended event, and it's, it's always nice to see the residents come out and have questions answered. And then the car safety, it's checks that we do, we had seventy-nine inspections completed in 2019, nine of those revealed seats that were unable to be repaired and had to be replaced on-site so that kid could leave in a safe car seat, all at zero cost to the general fund and zero cost to the resident. We get these seats through community partners, they come, they help us, and I, I think protecting those nine kids left in seats that were safe. In addition to the nine that we've replaced, we had thirty-seven critical observations that were able to be fixed on-site that day, whether it was turning the car seat around, adjusting the harness, fixing the latch, and that's, so that's thirty-seven seats that were, came in in a, in a condition that would not have protected that kid to its fullest potential, that left being able to protect that kid to its fullest potential. So that's another one of my, my favorite programs that we've been allowed to do, and everybody's favorite, triple E. So, the slide, I think, says it all, the risk is gone for now. We do know that triple E is cyclical, we do expect another two, one to two years of increased risk. One of the things that was really great about East Long Meadow being part of the mosquito control district is that the traps are set here weekly, so we knew right away, not only was it kind of like maybe around here, but it was here and we knew it, and that allowed us to make choices within town leadership about how to protect our residents, where a lot of the other communities said, well, it's kinda next door, we think it's, we could be here, so our residents knew it was here, we were able to get those protective messaging out, and public health is a lot about protective messaging and outreach, and that allowed us to really get that message to our residents. The state is looking at updating their arbo virus plan for next year, there were some opportunities for feedback sessions, and I, I think it does need some tweaks, and I think there are ways that we could've even more, had more impact on protecting our residents this year, that I hope that they address in the upcoming arbo virus plan. I know, I updated you guys a lot during email about this situation, I'm wondering if there's anything those emails should have included that might have been useful for you to be responsive to the residents and the questions you were getting, was that sufficient information, anything that I could do differently next year?
The updates were great, thank you.
The updates were very detailed.
Okay, and the other town departments that we worked with, REC and the schools, were all very accommodating, everyone's number-one goal was keeping people safe, so it worked really well considering the type of year that it, it was and the kind of the chaos that it created.
I think one of the things I just wanna point out as, as we're closing, is the fact that the approach that the health department has taken to really prepare and mitigate ahead of time, that investment, you can see now when these situations come up, that the department is much stronger and much better prepared to respond, and that's what's really important, where it's a much more proactive approach, both to the programming and address the health issues that come up, which puts us in a much shorter, stronger position to protect and to, you know, improve the health of the community. So I think that that's the part that you see the return in the investment, public health, unfortunately, isn't something that you see until an emergency comes up, but we've been able to show how building a department that has the strength to be able to address those issues even before they really get bigger, I think is, is what you're seeing, you know, as a result of what Amy has shared, so it's not just taking, taking care of the basics for really being able to promote the health in our community.
Thank you, ladies, this is a very comprehensive, user-friendly report, I would encourage Amy to have it posted on the website for folks, because there's a, a whole lot of useful facts in there that I think is important for residents to be able to see, and, as you said, you don't appreciate what the health department is or does until there is a hotspot that needs attention. The impact that your department and its programs has on this community is phenomenal. Appreciate your work.
Thank you, we really appreciate your support as well.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The maturity date of the trash company that we're currently using, the contract?
June thirtieth, 2020.
So.
The RFP should go out after the first of the year, so right now, what we're doing is looking at where we're going to bring our trash, we're trying to get the best rate for where we bring it, that way, when we negotiate with the hauler, they, they can give us an estimate on price based on the location that they know versus an unknown. So one of the things that happened with Republic when the disposal location changed is our cost with them was gonna dramatically increase because they were going a further distance, so we wanted to have that location first before we went out to bid on the trash contract.
That makes sense.
Follow-up, obviously, our trash barrels now are done by controls on it, so any new trash company, will they have the same controls? Are we specifically gonna have to look for a company that has vehicles like that?
I think the companies will be pleased that we are a semi-automated establishment now versus the manual, so when they, they will know that that's the type of system we have when we go out to bid.
Less work-income cases may be cheaper.
Right, much more efficient, yeah, absolutely.
So I will be back December tenth to give you kind of an update on the trash and recycling and those contracts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are making progress here in this agenda, moving on now to new business number two, the executive order on enhancing state and local involvement in a refugee resettlement program. And our manager, Mary, did you wanna speak about this a little bit?
Sure. I received a phone call from Maxine Stein, who's the director of the Jewish Family Service, asking if the town would be willing to be considered as a resettlement community in the event refugee resettlement is necessary. There was a new executive order issued by the president, and this, the document that you have in front of you asking for authority to have me sign off on it, explains the executive order that President Trump has issued. This correspondence will go back to the Secretary of State. I was told by Ms. Stein that East Long Meadow has never been a designated, not a designated community, but we've never had refugees placed here, and the likelihood of that ever happening is de minimis, because for the most part, they seek to place people on, in communities that have bus lines, public transportation, and, you know, services that are more readily available in, in inner cities or urban centers, and also, yeah, so it's basically, they wanna know that they could put refugees here if necessary, but the likelihood is not great.
So, I guess my question would be, if we give approval to sign this letter and it's submitted to the Secretary of State, is it?
Yes.
That creates the opportunity, should one arise, for East Long Meadow to receive a refugee family?
That's my understanding, yes.
What are the, beyond that, just beyond being identified and then a family identified to be relocated to this community, what are the, what would be the town's obligation?
You know, it's a good question, I, I don't know their legal obligation, I suppose if we say that we're gonna accept a refugee resettlement, then you're obliged to, if there is a suitable housing arrangement available, that we, you'd have to accommodate that person or that family. And I think that is also part of the reason why there's been so little interest in resettling people in East Long Meadow, because of the housing stock as well, that would not be affordable for people in that economic situation. She led me to believe that the likelihood of this ever happening was de minimis, and that's my word, not hers, but nevertheless, it's a necessity, because otherwise, they don't have any option to place, or even consider East Long Meadow as a, as a host community. Did you supplement that? I didn't print it right now.
I guess my question would be, if Ms. Stein is saying that in all likelihood, East Long Meadow wouldn't be ideal because of the housing market and the price of that, and the lack of public transportation and services that a refugee family might need to avail that aren't here, then why would they reach out to a community such as East Long Meadow if we're not a good fit?
Yeah, yeah, I understand your question, I, I think, I mean, I didn't ask her that, I didn't ask her why she was asking us for this, I think it's kind of a uniform request that goes out to probably every community, irrespective of whether or not.
You're a good fit or not?
You're a good fit, in an attempt to comply with the new executive order, which I suspect is slightly modified in its verbiage, I haven't read the prior one. So I, I think they probably have an obligation as a, as a resettlement agency to maximize their universe in terms of what communities might be available to them in the event that they had such a request.
Any other questions from the council?
I mean, let's say, the twenty-sixth, the letter was dated the twenty-first.
It came to us, to Mary and I, last Thursday, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, we really have to look into this, I mean, this is, and it talks about, you know, the Department of State, which is Michael Pompeo and the US, you know, their involvement, if, I think if we even, I think we need a lot more time to really delve into this, and I think we, there's an invitation by Ms. Stein to have a conversation, I know it's directed to, you know, Mary McNally, but at the same token, I would still be curious what Congressman Neal's office or any liaison with the US Department of State to get some more details of what President Trump's executive order on enhancing state and local involvement, involvement in refugee resettlement, get a little more detail on it, I mean, that was issued September twenty-sixth of this year, and honestly, it's the first I've heard about it, not that I know everything, but I certainly don't, but I, I, there's a lot to learn on this, guys, that's just my take, I think we need to, regardless of what Ms. Stein's timeline is on it, I think we need to give it the attention that, you know, that it needs, and, and a follow-up with further, just further communication, that's just me.
Through the chair? I would just say, it doesn't appear to be time-sensitive, and that's basically what you were stating, Don, and I don't know if I'm.
Well, I just saw this December twentieth thing on here, so, yeah, that's, that's a unilateral deadline, I mean, right?
That's the deadline that Ms. Stein is using, I don't, we're not educated enough to know if that is a deadline imposed through the executive order.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's any urgency to it, it came in, and the agenda hadn't been posted, so that's why it went on, it wasn't a matter of rushing it to get.
No, I just saw the December twentieth and today's date, and you know, and then, I've gone, you know, where the deadline came from.
So, would a motion be in order to adjust the motion to say not to authorize our town manager at this point in time?
Or to?
Table discussion, and sure we can get far, far more information as outlined in that letter, and also trying to find things through the state.
Well, yeah, it, it doesn't, it's the same thing, that Mary would not be authorized to do anything, but what we're trying to, point I think we're trying to make is we need more information.
Right, and it's not time-sensitive.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I agree, I think we have all the information we need, I've been following this myself, this arose as a result of the numbers of people that ICE were sending across the country with no notice, and leaving them off in bus stations in communities that didn't expect them to be there and had no ability to deal with them, and this is a result, this president's order says, if you're a community, a welcoming community, or sanctuary city, or whatever, and you want, you wanna receive people, you should get them, if you're not, they should not be suddenly, they shouldn't suddenly appear on your doorstep. So this, to me, is a very reasonable response on their part to say, well, now we need to get everyone to sign on saying they would agree to have somebody sent. Bottom line is, we're not a good fit, we don't have the services, we don't have the transportation, these, I mean, I've, I have been volunteering since nineteen eighty-five, and the people that I deal with on a regular, daily, weekly basis would have a hard time being in East Long Meadow, and I, I, I don't, and certainly, I don't see any urgency. So to me, this is, I understand why they're asking for this, we're, we're a terrible fit, and this is, this would be nothing more, in my opinion, than virtue signaling, it's like signing a blank check. You could literally have a family here for Christmas, because there was no room at the end.
Wanna read the motion as it is and have it voted on?
Anyone else want to respond?
No, I tend to agree with Pat, I, I don't see how, it sounds like this is a blank document that was sent out to all the communities, and they're looking for some sort of response to say yes or no, so let's, let's just take a vote and give them an answer.
I feel as though we don't have enough information, and the letter says that if you would like more, and if you have questions about the executive order, I recommend that you contact the Department of State.
We should probably make a motion to continue the discussion. We should probably make a motion to continue the discussion.
I think you raise a good point, that Richie Neal may be able to shed some light, or someone from his office.
Yeah. I think we need to have some more information on it. I think we should give it some deference, but, but I agree with both Pat and Tom, that I'm curious on the fit, and whether it's a boilerplate letter sent to every community, and just fill in town manager, mayor, or chair of a board of selectmen, and it's just going to everybody. But I'm not, you know, keen on the unilateral deadline, I'm not keen in the fact that this just arrived, and, and that there's, there's questions, I think, the community and the council certainly needs to have answered. But, but my gut reaction is, you know, we don't have a hospital in this town, we don't have, we have a tax school system, we have other things, and I'm, it's not saying we don't have a welcome mat, and I mean, you know, I think this is a wonderful community, but at the same time, I, I don't like something that was just dated the 21st, today's the 26th, and to say, make a decision in just a couple of weeks. That's just, especially when the letter on its own suggests that we contact the Department of State, you know? And by not doing that, I don't think we're, I think, I think we should, we should at least make the effort to contact and see what they have to say, but, but my, but, you know, but my point at this point is, my instinct is that we may not be the perfect community based on lack of really comprehensive public transportation, and as well as, you know, hospital facilities and so forth, to have a, an undetermined amount of refugees in East Long Meadow. And again, it's not a slight on that by any stretch, I want to make that very clear. I think what, what we need to do is, is to, is to take a, is to contact the Department of State and try to get, try to get something on, on what they're, what it's all about.
Again, going back to the original motion, I don't feel comfortable having an acting town manager send anything to anybody. And we're in the process of hiring a new town manager, and I think this, it's just bad timing. So I would be in favor of motioning to not send it.
Well, we could do what Pat said as well. We can read the motion as it's printed and vote on it.
Yeah, I agree with Tom in the context that this is not something that I think that Mary would have, would have wanted to sign without council input. This is a legislative matter for us to look at. This letter should come from us, if it, if it came, rather than from, from Mary. That's just my opinion. In answer to your observation, Don, I don't believe anything we can hear from the Department of State will change our abilities or inabilities to deal successfully with resettling refugees. So I'm not sure that we're buying any time or value to get that input. So I would, I would move to vote more, more rapidly.
I'll move to vote instead of tabling it.
So through the chair. If we voted not to approve this, it doesn't mean that down the road, a month, two months, six months, that we couldn't at that time turn around and say, you know what, we're better equipped now, we have more answers, we know what is going on, and at that time, then we could.
Yeah.
So I, I, I think to give them an answer would be, would be good, but like I said, knowing that we can change our mind down the road. I mean, this isn't in stone forever, this is just, hey, you're asking for a response tonight. Our response tonight is this. Six months, it may be different.
Then basically, the motion, again, through the chair, would be a motion at this time, not to authorize, right? Is that the wording we're suggesting? At this time, not to?
I would be in favor of that clause, because it leaves the door open for further consideration.
At least have, you know, at least find out what has, what they're saying. But, right, I mean, there's a number of factors. Number one, we have an acting town manager. Number two, the timeliness of this, it's just, it's not days, only days ago, and so, I mean, I would support a motion with that qualification, to say, motion at this time, not to authorize acting town manager, and then continue the motion as printed.
All right, I'll make a motion. A motion at this date and time, identified as 11/26/19, at 6:35, or 7:35, to authorize acting town manager Mary McNally to give written consent for continued refugee resettlement in East Long Meadow, as required under Executive Order 13888, on enhancing state and local involvement in refugee resettlement.
If you don't mind, just a point of order, and again, through the chair, if I don't mind, if I can ask our town council, a motion of this nature, is it appropriate to frame it as I suggested?
It is.
Thank you. And I, I don't think we need to put it in the neg, in, put it in affirmative to vote in the negative. I think this type of, is simple, is a simple request, and that it can be framed as I suggested.
Not to authorize.
The motion I would propose, and I'll just throw it out for discussion, I would make a motion at this time, not to authorize the acting town manager Mary McNally to give written consent for continued refugee resettlement in East Long Meadow, as required under Executive Order 13888, on enhancing state and local involvement in refugee resettlement. That's the way I would frame it.
Well, we can use that motion.
All right, then, consider it made.
And I'll second it.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion?
I would just like to repeat, I'm not sure that this is a Mary McNally issue. I think this is a town council legislative issue, and the, the letter should come from us, but I'm not, that's just by way of discussion, I'm not amending the motion.
I mean, if, if that's the consideration, I don't think, well, I don't want to speak for Mary, but we could co-sign the letter that goes out.
That's a solution? Or we could address that.
Yeah, the letter's basically, she's being asked to apply this JFS of Western Mass, and we're saying, we don't, we are not, at this time, giving her authorization to-
To do it.
To do it.
Right, so in fact, we're legislating that.
Right.
Right. Okay, further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated by Mr. Anderson, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Abstentions. The motion passes unanimously. And we are now down to the review of town council rules. Historically, we have done this in November. Our first version of council rules was in November of 2016, and on two dates, in November of 2017, as well as November of 2018, slight adjustments and edits have occurred. That said, are there other things in the council rules that you would like to put on the table for discussion? Ralph, you're smiling, so I'll let you-
Through the chair. Obviously, you know I've gone through all of them.
Yes, I know.
Through the chair. Under our council rules and regulations, page two, rule number one, council officers. Back in June of 2018, we changed the charter to read at the first regularly scheduled council meeting, at which the full council is present. Under our rules and regulations, that doesn't mirror this. So I would look to add, I'll read what I'm looking at. The first town council meet, this is under the rules, the first town council meeting of each fiscal year, at which the full council is present, would be added, shall be an organizational meeting, at the time the council shall nominate a president and finish it.
So we're, we're inserting the clause, at which the full council is present?
And that would mirror the change that was done to the charter.
To that, under that same rule, in July, we also had some discussion around the issue of a, an individual sitting as president or vice president, not serving more than two consecutive years, unless the full council votes to allow otherwise. Is that still the appetite of the council? We didn't take action on it then, we, we had a sense of agreement on that.
I would be in favor.
I would be in favor of that.
Mike wants relief.
So I would recommend then, that at the end of that second paragraph, the president and vice president shall serve no more than two consecutive years in office, unless a majority vote of the council authorizes-
Otherwise.
Otherwise. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fine.
We can do it anyway.
Exactly. You and I are right.
It's almost like a wish, but that's okay.
Belt and suspenders.
So, through the chair.
Yes.
Moving forwards, page six of Rules and Regulations, under Rule 5E, Orders of Business.
Five what E?
5E, Order of Business, number five. It says, Council Response to Public Comment. I believe we've changed it to Council Comment, and I think this should just reflect that-
Okay, so that should just say Council-
Council Comment.
I would like to back up just for a minute to Rule 4. It starts on the one page and continues on the next, into the paragraph that says, the presiding officer may at any time during the debate and otherwise, declare a recess for not more than 10 minutes. It's been my experience, both as chair and as a member, that we have often said five minutes or 10, and sometimes need to go a little bit longer, and I'm thinking of a recess we needed to, to take during our budget approval meeting, where we were recessed for the better part of-
Twenty, twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes or longer. So I think 10 minutes is a little tight there. I would like to recommend that we move it at least to 15. There's, it's, it would be only in extraordinary circumstances that we'd need more.
I, I wouldn't object to 15, but I, I like 10, because it indicates that this is not a time to get together and talk.
Right, it's not a topic.
It's, it's, yeah, it's very, very quick.
You can say over longer by a supermajority.
And a supermajority can always extend it, even under the current, under the current rule.
Okay, then, all right, then I'm okay with leaving it. I recall some casual comments under 5F, around the issue of individuals who wish to speak at a council meeting, needing to register with the clerk by 3:45 on that, the day of the meeting. And I, and again, it was just casual comments, that, that seemed a little restrictive, and perhaps, an individual might come to the meeting, assuming they'd have an opportunity to speak, and not being aware that if they hadn't registered, they're, they can't be recognized.
I agree. I, I think people, people anticipated they would be able to speak. We have not had a volume of people come in.
I don't think it's been an issue for us, but I would like to remove the barrier to it.
And I think people look at it and say, oh, I have to go sign up, I can't make it there in time, and I, I would, I would like to remove that.
I, I think we can add, through the chair, a reasonable list to it, and here's the reason, just from, you know, if you run a meeting and you have a particularly contentious issue, just for the sake of discussion, let's say trash barrels, okay? And you have one meeting where 40 people show up at a given night, we pretty much, if running the meeting, you've lost control of the meeting, okay? If the people have signed up, basically, now we know we have this many people, and we can adjust accordingly, because we're going to have people at public hearings coming in at 6:30 or other times, and now we have a full house because they're upset about something, and we're giving them the opportunity to speak, you know, a reasonable period of time. So I think, I think there should be a loud, a loud exception at the discretion of the chair, that, you know, if reasonable, but at the same time, you, I could, I could see a situation where we've, where we've lost control of a meeting, and people that are planned for, and brought up presentations, and did things for 6:30, are not going to be able, well, people use it as a, almost like a-
But I think the chair still has the right to cut off comments at a, at a particular point, if he or she deems one of two things, the meeting's out of control, or we've lost the clock, and we have important matters at that point that need addressing.
So what I would suggest on is, have the 3:45 still, or at the discretion of the chair, okay? So that people know, if they want to speak, who'll know, but if someone says, listen, guys, we have a, you know, 6:30, a 6:45 public hearing, we got this going on, we respect that, my discretion is, no, we'll have you sign up for the next meeting, we appreciate your comments are valuable, but tonight isn't the best night, as opposed to just feeling that's, that's a right, because, you know, it just, I think it just creates a little more control, but at the same time, we're not married to the hard line of 3:45, that if somebody does show up and says, I really would like to speak tonight, and there's like five people in the audience, we don't, we're not now encumbered by that 3:45, that the chair would have discretion to waive that for this night, at the chair's discretion.
Anyone else?
I've actually experienced that back under the old selectmen, and through the generosity of Paul, been allowed to speak, been allowed to address the council. If I thought that that was something that would, would be done by this council, I would agree. My concern was with the 3:45, my concern was that it is an inhibitor to some people. They'll say, nah, either I missed it, or no, I'm not going to do that, and so I'm not going to, I'm not going to go.
An inhibitor, but not a prohibitor.
Yeah, it's, it's an inhibitor.
Through the chair, I would agree with what you're saying as well, Pat. I, you know, we're the legislative body, and we took the place of these residents, and we, I wouldn't want to deny them an opportunity based on not being able to make it in the town hall, and I can refer back to a meeting that we had, when there was a zoning issue on the floor, and everyone that spoke at that meeting was not, did not come in and sign up for public comments. And the meeting was very well organized, through the chair, people addressed, stated their address, and whether it was yes or no, and it worked seamlessly, so.
I, just a comment to make, one of my concerns, as Consular Anderson mentioned, he joined two issues. One is the 3:45, and the other is presentations of, of some sort of program or objective that they have, that they'd like us to consider. I think in that, we ought to be, or stand firm in that, if this is something of value, we ought to have time to review it, and not be handed something that night in a public comment, and asked to make comments on it or review it.
Through the chair. I did have comments, actually, on this, and I do agree, I believe we should remove the 3:45 barrier. If someone comes in, under public comments, when you announce it, allow them to speak. We do have limitations of three minutes.
And the chair can adjust that, if, for instance, there's 20 people that want to speak.
And if it goes long, we also have the option of saying, we have a 6:30 public hearing, so we are going to suspend public comment for now, and we'll pick it up later, if time allows. And that way there, you're not trying to rush around, trying to call town hall to get put on a list, and, and I'll be truthful, a lot of times, you're sitting there, and all of a sudden, something pops in your head, and you're like, you know, I wanted to mention this to them, but now I can't. That was my thought on it, and that's one of the things I was going to bring up tonight.
So how do we address this, then?
Take a straw poll, vote on eliminating the 3:45. How do you feel about it?
Yeah, yeah. We can always try, and if it doesn't work, we can, we can always adjust it and say, you know what, that, that didn't work.
Remove it?
But we still should encourage people, encourage, just, again, trying to run a meeting is encourage- But we still should encourage people, encourage, just, again, trying to run a meeting is encourage people to use best effort to kindly let the town clerk's office know that you would like to speak, and I don't, I think that just allows, that's only fairness to the people who come in from Boston, or come in, other people have appointments that night doing presentations or other things.
Right, exactly.
And now all of a sudden, now they're being pushed off a half hour, forty-five minutes for something totally unexpected.
So we are at, we're removing the barrier of 3:45 on the day of, but, and leave, let me see if this will work. Any member of the public desiring to address the council are encouraged to-
Register.
Register with the clerk. I just still feel like, once somebody says, sees 3:45-
Prior, well, prior to the meeting. Doesn't have to say 3:45, just say, because it's a fait accompli anyway, that town hall closes at four o'clock. So prior to the meeting, register, you know, to-
But that could be interpreted as, okay, you're encouraged to register, but if, in the absence of registering, they could assume they can't speak.
They could.
It's how you interpret the word encouraged, and I think it just creates, again, I don't think it's going to squash public testimony, and we're going to, you can allow them. People are, you know, can speak at the discretion of the chair, but at the end of the day, I think it creates a better order to a meeting by having an idea of how many people want to speak that evening, if possible. Again, it's not to curtail, it's to control a managed, organized meeting the best you can within, and out of fairness to all other people that are already on hard schedule times.
And I think, again, going back to my point, presenting something with documentation is something that they ought to be planned, they ought to plan.
Well, to me, there's a difference between comment and proposal.
Right. But again, just going back to the comments that Consular Anderson mentioned, I think the two need to be separate. We remove this barrier, but there needs to be some process where, if someone has something they want to bring to our attention, and they have a full presentation they'd like us to review, they need to register.
Well, I think once they approach the microphone, and that becomes apparent, we would, the chair would say, this needs to be placed on an agenda for consideration, and I'll turn it over to the clerk to find an appropriate time. That will happen naturally.
And remind them of the three minutes.
Right.
Okay.
The safety net is the three minutes, I believe.
So we're still looking to have a sign up sheet, so when someone comes in, they put their name on it.
We can do that.
At the meeting. And if we do that, then obviously whoever signs up first during the week, if they're thinking, they start the list, and so that the people that have signed up are able to speak first, and then anyone coming in takes the risk that, well, maybe it runs too long or something. I mean, chances are, we only have typically one, maybe two people under public comments, so, I mean, I'm thinking most people that come in will walk over, put their name on it that they want to speak. I mean, or we can just call out and say, is there any public comments at this time?
Well, we do that anyway.
And see, and see how that works.
I would be in favor of just striking the whole paragraph and trying it out with just, at each meeting, there's a period set aside for public comment.
Second.
Yeah.
Limited to three minutes.
And something about comments are limited.
Second, third. Give it a try.
All right, we'll give that a try. Three minutes, I hope I can understand. No slating. Any other corrections or additions? I have one that Mr. Kane and I have struggled with for the last two years, and that's rule 11, committee parameters and guidelines. The sentence that says, "The president and vice president of the council shall not serve as a chairperson of any committee." That's all well and good, but then that only leaves a certain amount of remaining folks, five, who can chair. Right now, we have one, two, three, four, five, eight committees. I would recommend removing the vice president from that.
I would concur, yeah.
I absolutely agree that the president should just be able to be ex officio and sit in on any meetings as a non-voting member, but I think that hamstrings us too much with both officers.
Like Pat, we did have discussion on it, and with the workload, it's not fair to impose, have somebody sitting on three or four different committees when the workload is heavy. So at least if we can utilize one extra council member in a vice president capacity, I think that would be a good change.
So just a quick comment thought, I don't see anywhere in here where it says that a council member has to be the chairperson-
It doesn't.
Of the committee, which means if you have a citizen on the committee-
Right.
They could be the chairperson.
That's correct.
So I don't see where, I mean, even though you have eight committees, it doesn't mean that the four people, five people that are left have to be the chairperson of every committee.
Again, through the chair, the response to that is, certainly preferred to have a council member, because when we have the committee reports, we're now anticipating that the citizen will be at the meeting, waiting to that opportunity to make the citizen report.
Well, I think that goes without saying that, if you have a citizen as a chair, that that individual assumes that responsibility, understands they're assuming other additional We've actually experienced that in our last budget season, and we had a citizen who chaired the financial oversight and did a wonderful job.
I don't have any problems with removing the vice president.
The president will remain ex officio.
Just ex officio.
Yep.
As it relates to all of the committees, financial oversight, planning matters, licensing matters, general bylaws, town manager, well, town manager one doesn't apply to what I'm going to say. I, right now, the composition on those committees is up to three counselors and two town residents. I would like to propose changing the two, up to, from two town residents, up to three town residents, so there's a little more parity on each of those committees, and gives more of the public an opportunity to serve.
Well, it does say up to, which means you could have two counselors and three residents. Is that what you're?
No, we're saying we can have up to three counselors and only two residents. I'm proposing saying up to three counselors and up to three residents.
Through the chair, I think one of the reasons why it's set up that way is so that it'd be an odd number, and for voting purposes.
But I think the up to would take care of that, assuming that we know the committee has to be an odd number.
Right.
We have three residents that want to serve on it, then you would put two counselors on it.
Yeah.
And maybe up to three residents, a committee not to exceed seven members unless necessary.
Well, you could have. You can only have three counselors and three residents.
I meant to say five.
That's the other reason why it's, why it's the way it is. So it doesn't end up being six.
Yeah, certainly right. Five.
I would, I would be okay with it.
I'd agree as well.
I agree, as long as it doesn't end up being six.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and the council, the presiding officer can, does those appointments, and then reports that to the council, and so care will be taken by subsequent presidents to make sure that stays in a state of five.
Another, just a question, can, can there be small committees with just three members? One counselor, two citizens, two counselors, one?
Yes, I think so.
So maybe just an odd number, not to exceed five?
Right.
Maybe that would be, you know, qualified, because you might just have a small, hey, let's just take care of this thing, but we really can't hit five people to work on this. This is a lot easier with three.
I think the wording still includes that, as it is, allows that.
Do you have one?
I do, through the chair. Rule number nine, rejected measures. It basically says that once a measure's been rejected, it can't come in front of the council for six months. Mass general law under zoning is, once the council rejects it, it's a two-year wait. So I don't know just how to put the wording in there, but I would say six months, or what mass general law requires.
The greater of six months, or as required by mass general law?
Okay.
The greater of six months, or-
As may be required by mass general law.
Okay. Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Do you have more?
I have no more under our council rules.
I do.
But if you do, great.
Well, it's more of a clarification for Don. The communications ad hoc committee, is that, do you want to still keep that as a-
At this point, I'm going to say, I don't mind putting in a ban, so I think what we need is a bigger commitment toward a social media budget and so forth, and until we have that, it's really, we can't really go anywhere. If we don't have any, any opportunities to revamp our website, or create, you know, something involving a cohesive social media campaign, I, you know, we're just spinning our wheels.
So I think we can then just leave it and not use it until we have the capacity to use it.
Sure.
Mine's fine with that.
Ralph, do you have something else?
Not under our rules, under our charter.
Let's just finish this first. Any, any other adjustments to rules? Okay. I think we have it. Give or take a word or two. All right, now, you have a question, but I want to make sure we have an agenda item for it.
Actually, it is-
An observation.
Well, it's an observation based on going through the council rules, realizing that our town had voted in on June 5th, 2018, three amendments to the charter. And then when I brought up the charter online, the amendments are not in it. Our original charter's there, so I just think that-
Well, that's just an adjustment with the website.
Exactly, and I just think our documents, once we vote something, or the town votes, we need to get it up onto-
Needs to be posted.
I mean, that's a year and a half now, and it's getting up there.
It's the same thing with the budget. That's not posted.
What I was saying about social media, and how we have to have, elevate that, and then we can resurrect the committee, because these are some of the things that fall through.
Remember that, Don, when you get the budget through town council budget.
I'll remember.
Can I, Chair?
Yes.
The enhancements, or on the end of the charter, it's not included with the charter, it's at the end.
They come to the end?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if you scroll all the way down, it's on the last page.
So the language within the charter was changed out by vote, so what we should be doing is making a note of the changed language within the charter.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't expect someone to read through the charter, and then all of a sudden go to the end and say, hey, let's see if any of this is changed. I mean, it's like our rules and regulations, are we going to put all of these at the end? No, we're going to change the language, and I think that's, I mean, once it's been voted by the town, the language has to change. I would suggest maybe putting brackets in and say, amended on such and such a date to this, but I don't think anyone's ever going to go to the end of the charter to see what language within has been changed.
And through the chair, that exists in the bylaws, too.
I was just going to say bylaw practice.
It's in the back.
I would be willing to work on that piece, to make sure the charter says what it should say, with appropriate references to the older language, and we'll work out how that works.
Do you want to do that with Jean?
No, I'm not, I'm not going to volunteer for the bylaws. Yeah, I'll do that.
I thought I saw an opportunity there.
That's up to, that's up to general code.
Yes.
And their, their methods.
They're dealing with it.
All right, then I think we are ready to move to number four, the discussion of a second town council meeting date in December, and as, luck would, not luck, but as a matter of fact, over the weekend, I sent an email to you at the request of our search consultant, asking for us to identify the date at which we will do live interviews with our three to four town manager finalists. The search committee met yesterday and interviewed eight candidates, and their charge was to reduce that to three or four. Mr. Lynch will be with us at the December 10th meeting to publicly identify those finalists, and through our collaboration, we have agreed that the second December meeting will occur on, and we're going a little off cycle, but it's for his availability as well as ours, Wednesday, December the 18th, at 4:00 p.m. in this room. And that, the only agenda item is the interview of the finalists.
Otherwise, we'd be falling on the 24th.
Yes, and we are not, for our sake or the candidate's sake, we will refrain from any type of meetings barring emergencies during those holiday days. We have action items for the next meeting, and do we? Well, Amy is coming back with more information, and Sarah will be returning with the enterprise revolving and capital request accounts for December 10th. And now, under executive session, we have an executive session tonight to consider complaints regarding the performance of, and to consider the discipline or dismissal of certain town employees. So I would move that we move into executive session for the purpose of considering complaints regarding the performance of, and to consider the discipline or dismissal of certain town employees, and to re-enter open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, and this is a roll called vote. Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, we will only be returning to open session for the purpose of adjournment. So to our viewing patrons, we thank you for watching, and we'll be back in session on Tuesday, December 10th.